To order at 5:30 this evening, September 2nd, 2025, we are going to go into closed session. A meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open to the public for attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not the closed session part, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council. Prior to the meeting, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cole, here. Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Councilmember Pascuali?
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden?
I am here.
Mayor Shaw?
Right. So we're going into closed session. I don't see Shannon on the feed here. These are the items we'll be discussing. Item A is a liability claim. The claimant is Jose Escuall, claim number 25-23. Agency claimed against the city of Yuba City. We'll be also taking up a B. Item B, liability claim. Claimant is Joseph Crusay, claim number 25-24. Agency claimed against is the city of Yuba City. Item C, liability claim. Claimant is John Branstetter and family. Claim is 25-25. Agency claimed against the city of Yuba City. And we will adjourn into closed session over in the Sutter Room, and we will be back at approximately 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. All right, here we go. All right. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the city council, the city of Yuba City, to order on September 2nd, 2025. May I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Councilmember Cole? Here. Councilmember Kirchner?
Present.
Councilmember Pascuali?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
All right. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in an agenda, in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. We're going to start tonight off with invocation. We have Pastor Greg with us this evening, and please stand or stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Cole.
All right. Thank you for the invitation. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the time to be together tonight. Thank you for these who serve our city. Protect them, watch over them, and we are grateful for each one who stands in the gap, Lord, on behalf of us, whether it is in this chamber, for these council members, for their families, for their staffs, Lord, be it our police officers, our firefighters, our paramedics and EMTs, our schoolteachers, Father. Lord, we continue to be reminded of the dangerous world in which we live. Protect each one of our school campuses. Watch over them and continue to provide in every way. Lord, for the business that's before this council, give wisdom, give clarity, give discernment. Thank you again for their service, and thank you for this community that we call home. We ask your blessing upon it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor Greg. All right. So we're going to go ahead, and it looks like Shannon's with us remote. Shannon Chaffin is our city attorney. He's going to give us a quick report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was one report of a lack in a closed session with our status of A. The authorization of the claim and the amount of $160 was approved by vote of four to zero. All of the claims in the closed session were denied by votes of four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Agenda modifications. Anybody have anything that they want to modify? Seeing none. How about you, Mr. Bendorff? Nothing? Awesome. Public communication, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, and I don't have any. Christie, okay. No public communications. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. Do we have any comments from the public on the consent calendar items, numbers two through 11? None seen. Okay. Anything that needs to be removed by any of us up here? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Through the mayor?
Please.
I take action on item consent calendar two through 11?
Second. All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Pascuali, a second by Councilmember Kirchner. All those in favor of the consent calendar approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar items, two through 11, are passed unanimously. I'm going to beat Shaw's record. Maybe. All right. Business items. Downtown business assessments. We're going to hear a presentation by Mr. Ethan Gutierrez. He's our accounting manager. Welcome to the podium.
Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for having me this evening. We will be discussing downtown business improvement assessments. So before we start, I do want to provide a disclaimer. We did update the resolution and staff report due to a change. Someone came in and made a payment. Everything that's in this presentation is reflected of that, but our prior information that we had posted on the Thursday didn't include that as well. All right. So the purpose of this is to recover unpaid downtown business assessment by placing them on secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes, directing that a lien also be placed on the subject properties. This item supports the council's Quality of Life goal through the city's maintenance, improvement, and investment in the city's infrastructure. So a little bit of background on this, and I'm sure we're all privy to it. These are our muni codes. So 39020, Establish Downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District under the Parking and Business Improvement Area Law of 1989. The district includes two benefit zones based on the level of benefit each area will receive. So moving on, 39030, Effective August 19, 1998. In summary, the elected officers of the Downtown Yuba City Business Association act as an advisory board to the city council. They recommend how to spend assessments, revenues, classify businesses, and determine assessment methods. So this will make sense in a second. So further background, 39040, Commencing January 1, 1999. In summary, all businesses within the district must pay an annual assessment. The amount depends on the business's benefit zone, classification, and number of employees. So as you can see with the business types there, we have retail, restaurant service, professional business, lodging business, financial institutions. The business size itself depending on number of employees, small, medium, large, and then also the different zones being Zone A, Zone B. These are the amounts that are assessed. This has not been updated since 1999. So within our business improvement district, we have 68 total parcels, 60 commercial use Zone A. That is the orangish color. I'm not great with colors, but that's the orangish color. 17 commercial use Zone B, and then one residential use, which would be exempt. So on December 17, 2024, Resolution 24168, city council received the 24, 25 annual report from the Yuba City DBA and declared its intention to levy and collect an annual assessment for the calendar year 2025. Also on that day, city council adopted Ordinance 00125, updating the Yuba City Downtown Business Improvement District ordinance, which provided all assessments which remain delinquent relating to the collection of the assessments may be confirmed by the city council as special assessment and collected with property taxes or as a judgment lien. So that's why I'm here today, is in part two with Ordinance 00125. On January 21, there was a public hearing that was completed for the purpose of the city council to hear and consider all protests against the levying of the proposed assessments related to the Resolution 24168. During the public hearing, the city council heard and considered all oral and written protests, including other comments regarding the levying of the proposed assessments. No comments were made. Resolution 2506, 006, was adopted. So in part two, all that, with all the efforts that we must complete with the addendum or the amendment through Ordinance 00125, our former city manager did meet with the public and offered business and property owners to discuss 00125 prior to its adoption. Through that, we met with property owners, business owners that showed up. We discussed, how can we assist property owners with maybe putting language in the lease to make sure the funds are collected? So there was a lot of troubleshooting and a lot of engagement for the folks that did show up as far as what can be done. The Downtown Business Association representatives physically handed out delinquent invoices to business owners, and then also a 15-day mailed notice of the city council meeting was sent on August 11, 2025. Also, within Section 39050D, on August 27, 2025, the city conducted a pre-hearing as required by 39050D, where the public hearing officer heard and considered all objections or protests to the report concerning the delinquencies. So the items that you're going to see right now reflect the resulting outcome. So as a result of 2024 assessments, there is a total of 12 outstanding invoices, which amount to $4,840. For 2025 assessments, there are 17 outstanding invoices that amounts to $7,072.08. So from a fiscal impact perspective, this item includes the following elements: 14 different parcels, 29 delinquent invoices, and $11,912.08 of unpaid downtown business assessments. So if the proposed resolution is adopted, assessments in the total of $11,912.08 will be included on the property's taxes. These assessments have a high probability of being collected over time. These assessments levied are used to fund improvements and activities to promote the Downtown Business Improvement District, which indirectly impacts sales tax growth in the district. So the alternatives. Council shall hear and consider all objections or protests, if any, to the report concerning the delinquencies. Thereafter, the city council may adopt, revise, reduce, or modify any delinquency or overrule any or all objections thereto. The city council then make its determination on each delinquency identified in the report. The city council's determination shall be final. So the recommended action is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution for the inclusion of the unpaid downtown business assessments on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien also be placed on the subject properties. Any questions?
Okay. Before we open up the public hearing, any questions from the city council members? Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I did have just a quick comment. And maybe there are questions just for clarification for Ethan. But first of all, great job, Ethan. I know there's a lot of work involved with you and Deanna and finance, and I know Christie as well. But I wanted to confirm that the notices that went out to the delinquent assessment payers, and I believe there was four notices total. There are three or four that went out over a period of time, correct? At different?
That is correct.
Intervals?
That is correct.
So it wasn't they just received one notice or they read about the ordinance in a newspaper or something? The second, these dollars are not for the city. These are not city dollars. They are collected for the DPA. We're just the collection agent for the DPA, according to our ordinance. But we don't receive, we don't receive any overhead. We don't receive any of the direct money, anything like that. We just collect those for the DPA. And then also, not included in here are the penalties that could have been called for, and that was a recommendation that we've made because it is the first year that we're doing it. We just adopted the ordinance, and we're just going with the straight back owed dollars. Correct, Ethan?
That is very correct.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you. I don't know if I missed it, but Ethan, were any of the payments made by last minute by any of the individuals on this?
That is correct. Just one.
So was the last minute payment and is the update about how it will be reflected across the city council?
Yes, yes. We've updated that through the ordinance, yeah. Or through the resolution. I apologize.
So if there was a motion to be made, please, if we have a council, if we're trying to move it, the resolution may be reversed.
Okay. I think we have that. Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Okay. Get things in order here. The public hearing on the Downtown Business Assessments is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? I do not see any. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to the council for action.
Through the Vice Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to adopt a resolution, as amended by staff, for the inclusion of unpaid downtown business assessments on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes and directing that a lien also be placed on the subject properties.
Second. I have a motion by, I have a motion by, geez. I do have a motion and a second for item number 12, which is the Downtown Business Assessments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item 12 passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Ethan, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
And Deanna and all those that were involved. And Robert, I know Christie, you said Christie was involved as well. Thank you. All right. Item number 13, which is a community sponsorship request by Casa de Esperanza. This is going to be presented by Christie Morales. And here we go.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Christie Morales, and I'm bringing to you tonight the community sponsorship for Casa de Esperanza. Casa de Esperanza is a designated domestic violence and rape crisis center for Yuba Sutter area, providing support for survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, child abuse, human trafficking, and elder abuse. Each year, Casa answers over 1,000 crisis calls, provides over 6,000 nights of safe shelter, and delivers thousands of hours of therapy and education. With the launch of Hope Haven Counseling and Support Center, Casa has expanded its reach to meet growing community needs. Last month, Casa de Esperanza asked for a sponsorship for their Casa de Country fundraiser. A monetary sponsorship of $2,500 would utilize the community events to the account. Right now, we have $10,000 budgeted for community contributions and community events, $2,500 quarterly. And so this would utilize quarter ones budget. The fiscal impact is a monetary sponsorship in the amount of $2,500. Alternatives, one, do not authorize the monetary sponsorship request; two, approve the monetary sponsorship request with changes; and three, provide staff with alternate directions. The recommendation tonight is to consider the sponsorship from Casa de Esperanza, and if approved, adopt the resolution to approve the monetary sponsorship request from Casa de Esperanza in the amount of $2,500. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Any questions for Christie?
I do.
Go ahead.
Looking at the staff report, when I was going through it, and you had the number up there, the 1,000 calls that they get. They said that they get approximately 500 new calls. My concern is, is this a re, is this kind of a revolving door with half of the calls? They just keep coming? No resolutions coming of some of these problems? That was my first concern. The second is, the ask letter is asking for $2,500. However, it didn't give me any kind of a accounting of what that $2,500 is going to be used for. If, I would like to see in the future that if they do ask for $2,500, that they show me that their $2,500 didn't bring in $50. I'd like to see what our $2,500 is actually. Because this is, this isn't a, something, this is an ask to generate money. And I would like to see that in the future. If you could pass that on, whoever. Do we have the director?
No.
Okay. Does that make sense to you, young lady? Okay. All right. That's my only comments that I had. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
Not a question. I'm glad you did say something. So, did I interrupt? Did I interrupt you?
Oh, uh-uh. Mark asked if I had anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the, sorry about that. So this, this body is very supportive of Casa, and I hope, I hope you understand that. My, my short time beyond council, Casa is an amazing organization. My wife is a former, former board member, and it certainly was an eye-opener to me, what, what Casa does bring to the table. Some people know about it, some people don't, but it's, the right people know, I think. But it's, it's a huge asset to our community, and I'm all for this, this request. And I just wanted to make that public. Thank you.
I suppose I just have a concern, but it might be a question. What if we get another request before the time's up for the quarter?
So that, we'd have to, that would be up to you guys. You can utilize other quarters amounts, or you can recommend a different amount to Casa de Esperanza.
So September 30th is the end of the?
Okay. Yes.
Do you have something in mind?
No. I was just wondering, I was wondering what would happen if some other organization came in and wanted something, and we said, I'm so sorry, we gave it all away already. The needs are, you know, equal in my eyes.
So I think I'd, I'd make a comment that this is still sort of a, a program in process, not the Casa, but the giving and breaking it up into quarters. And I think we'll probably, if we haven't done it already, my suggestion would be is to get together and figure out if there's a deadline for each quarter, and that way you know whether somebody has, you know, if there's others. So for instance, the deadline for July, September might be, you know, June 15th or something like that. So you guys have, and we have time to review it. That way you have some advance notice, but you also have a cutoff date. And I would say also, I support Casa, obviously. But at the same time, I understand your concern. If you're giving everything away, and we haven't got to the end of September, someone could come in and go, hey, wait a minute. I don't think we have a deadline for submissions for each quarter. We may want to entertain that. Through the Vice Mayor? Yes.
I think in our deliberations, we spoke about, once they come to the table, they're off for the year.
It's true.
Is that true?
Yeah.
Well, is that?
Yes. That went through council in the last year. That is a yearly cycle.
Okay. So that is in place. Okay. Back to the council for action.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from Casa de Esperanza in the amount of $2,500.
Second. All right. I have a motion. Nope. You're sure right. Thanks for pointing that out. Anybody, there's only one person from the pub. Would you like to speak? Okay. Actually, there's more, but I knew that maybe you would want to. Okay. No pub? What about the right side of the aisle? Right side of the aisle is good?
Well, if you're really looking for somebody, I'd be more than happy. So here's my suggestion, is that I think,[1522.06] So here's my suggestion, is that I think, you know, it'd be great to hear after you've had your fundraiser, to see if, you know, we, obviously, if the city elects to provide some of the funding, it could be a catalyst for helping raise funds if you reported back to us at some point. I don't think we receive that a lot. So if you can come back to us after your fundraiser and just tell us how well it went and. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. So I've got public comment. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion to item, or item number 13 passes unanimously. I promise I'll do better in four months. Just getting tuned up again. I'm used to a COVID-filled room and people screaming at me, so last time I was mayor. Future agenda items. Anything from any of us on a future agenda? Hearing none, reports of communications. And we'll start with the city manager's report. Okay, nothing from Mr. Bendorf. City council reports, Councilmember Cole.
Not too much. I hope everyone had a nice Labor Day, not laboring. Just a Blue Zones update. They have their year three progress report, and as it specifically pertains to Yuba City, they were able to get several new school approvals for Blue Zones, and in Yuba City, they hosted over 730 students, parents, and staff in different workshops. All their food policy certification goals have been achieved, among other really great things. Some of them are in Marysville, so I'm not speaking specific, but they've gotten some work site and restaurant and grocery store approvals for Blue Zones. So it's a great, it's a great organization to be a part of, I think, for our city in terms of community and health sustainability. So that's it.
I have a question. I know Blue Zones had a certain timeframe where Adventist was going to support them. Have they talked about, and I think that clock is ticking, too.
I will ask. I don't know.
Okay. Be interesting to see.
I'd be more, so they're in their last year. So they formed a committee a while back ago. They asked that as representative of the city, that I sit on there, it's just primarily staff, and we talked about what accomplishments they've made over the last several years, things that they're involved in, and what the future potentially holds. They are running out of funding, but, and I believe their next step is to evaluate what's next based upon certain accomplishments that they've experienced over the last several years. So more to come.
Okay. Appreciate the info. All right. Next up is Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Couple of events. I attended my first meeting as a board member for our, what was it? Food Bank. Woo-hoo. The Food Bank. Great group of folks, great organization. They, we talked about, it looks like they're going to be home to a new cell tower, and we were discussing the terms of that. It's going to be a benefit to, obviously, the people in the area and a benefit to the Food Bank as well. Yuba Sutter Transit, we did have an open house prior to the board meeting to allow the public to see the renditions of what their new facility is going to look like in the great town of Linda. You're looking at about a $71 million facility, which was half funded through state and local and then half funded through federal. To give you an idea what this looks like, they currently have 57 traditional buses. By 2020, excuse me, by 2040, they plan on having 85 zero emission buses, and they plan on being opening, open by 2028. And their ridership continues to go up, which is encouraging because of COVID, it was going the other direction. Lastly, I would like to do a huge shout out to our first responders, especially FIRE, of the event that happened over on Center and Pluma Street this week. This certainly could have been a lot worse, my understanding. So great job with that. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Pasquale?
Nothing to report, Vice Mayor.
So I only had a couple of things. Regional Housing Authority, we followed up the council's action of the last meeting to finalize the funding for Richland Village, and so that project, as I understand, is a total go at this point, and we should be standing by and participating for a groundbreaking in October. That's the plan. So there's some affordable housing coming to the citizens of Yuba City. Also, followed up with CACOG, where the formal approval of the grant that will fund, I think it's 1.6 million to rehab George Washington Boulevard. So Josh, your team, thank you very much for their work on that. I mean, anytime we can get good roads or roads that have a lot of travel on them repaired, I think we're in great shape. So that, and then I would also echo Councilmember Kirchner's. I went down and took a look, you know, that any fire on Pluma Street, and there's been several, poses significant challenges to this, you know, this city's fire department. If, if you know what they were facing when they got there and how they addressed it and how they limited the spread and no injuries, it's really truly, they did a phenomenal job. And so to your folks, Chief Hubbard, thanks. I'm sure there were other city departments that were participating as well. I do, I do know that I've been in contact with the business owner. They are trying, Creative Interiors anyway, they're desperately trying to get themselves reopened. And so anything that we as a city can do, I know they're going to be coming in for demolition permits and, and anything else that we can do to help with that, I think it would be awesome to do that. And the bakery. All right. And I'm not sure what happened with the tenants. I'm sure they're out as well, right? TIP, take care of them or, or Red Cross? Yeah, excellent. Okay. Anything else from the council? All right. Anything, Mr. City Manager? Shannon, did I cover it all? I got a thumbs up. That's a good deal. All right. That concludes our meeting for this evening. Thank you for coming.